Evening and welcome to tonight's City Council Municipal Authority. It's March 7th, 2023. It's 7 o'clock. We're here in the Council Chambers, which is the Centennial Building, 12 South 5th Street in the great city of Yukon, Oklahoma. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Jean Newberry from South Yukon Church of Christ, followed by the flag salute. If you'll stand, please.
Let's pray. Our dear Father in heaven, we bow before you and we praise you and we adore you for this opportunity. Thank you for the day, for your mercy and your grace that has been displayed to us through your love. And heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity here to, for this committee here, the City Council, to meet. And our, dear Father, our prayer is that you will grant them wisdom and discernment and that through that power of your Spirit, that unity will be in their midst, guiding them in the decisions that will benefit and be a blessing to the community and to everyone around. Heavenly Father, we love you. Thank you so much for all that you have done for us through your Son. We pray this through Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Newberry. Okay, roll call.
Selby.
Here.
Wooten.
Here.
Yonda.
Here.
Gilliland.
Here.
Zimmerman.
We don't have any presentations or proclamations. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in the visitor's section? Seeing none, we'll recess as Yukon City Council and reconvene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A, YMA Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The City Manager recommends a motion to approve: A. The minutes of the regular meeting of February 21st, 2023; B. Consider a motion to execute a commercial construction agreement between the City of Yukon and B&amp;H Construction LLC for boring services as recommended by the Information Technology Director; C. Consider a motion to approve a lease site agreement for a new singular wireless PCS LLC cell tower to be located at 1650 West Vandement Avenue, the Vandement Water Tower property, as recommended by the Assistant City Manager. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Yonda.
Yes.
Gilliland.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes. Well, now adjourn as YMA and reconvene as Yukon City Council. Item 1, Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The City Manager recommends a motion that will approve: A. The minutes of regular meeting of February 21st, 2023; B. Payment material claims in the amount of $353,666.93; C. Designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, trade, donation, or disposal. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Gilliland.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Yonda.
Yes.
Item 2, Reports of Boards, Commission, and City Officials. Ms. Kretschmer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to inform the public tonight that there were some projects that were on our project list for the GO bond. Fortunately, ACOG has awarded us with some of those projects and that they will be funding those. One of them is a sidewalk from Andrew Drive. This is along Garth Brooks Boulevard, but Andrew Drive to Health Center Parkway. There will be another sidewalk that will be from Ranchwood on Yukon Parkway to the Stone Mill Retail Strip there. We also will be able to resurface Garth Brooks from Vandement to Main Street. So we're really excited and happy about those because those were some of the things that were on our list to be done on the GO bond election. We also have been working with ODOT to try to get some other projects done, especially on Garth Brooks with the east and westbound ramps to get on I-40. We're still working with them on those, so we will report back to you on another date on that. Some of the things that, ODOT has released their eight-year plan. As you all know, the sidewalks on Main Street, we've been talking to ODOT and it's 100% funding by ODOT on Main Street. Also, they will be resurfacing Route 66 from Banner to State Highway 4 and then from State Highway 4 to, I believe, Sarah. That will all be resurfaced in 2029. So that is on the eight-year plan. If there's any way that we could provide some money along with that or possibly pay for design work on that, we might be able to move that up faster. So I just want to let you know that we are trying everything we can to try to get some of those roads finished, try to get those done. And so we will be putting some money in the budget for those capital projects because with the ACOG grants, we will owe some money on that, 20%. So we will be working to put that in the budget. But I think we've been very fortunate to be able to get those ACOG grants and get those awarded. Thank you.
Thank you. That is wonderful news. Item 3, Consider a motion to approve the bid and enter into a contract with Chadha. Is that how you pronounce it?
Chadha.
Chadha. Okay, thank you. Architect for Architectural Services, as recommended by the City Manager. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I'm curious, so I mean, it's not like a paid contracts, like they're on-call.
That's correct.
So what is the benefit to us for, I mean, does this mean that we're kind of their priority if we have a job or we get special pricing or?
Well, we went through several interviews. We interviewed different firms and we chose the best one that we felt that would fit for Yukon. We've got some projects already that need to be taken care of. For instance, the HVAC system at the Dell Robertson Center. We need someone to come in and look at that. So this person will be the on-call architect to some of the problems that we've been having in the DRC with that HVAC, as well as the Jackie Cooper Gym. So.
So it saves us having to have an architect on staff.
Right. It does save us from having an architect on staff.
Yeah, yeah, I get, I get that part. Just curious, like, jobs that would normally go, I mean, we'll be, and architecture is a little different, but as far as bidding, but as far as if we have a project and generally we might get two or three different architects, an idea of what it costs to do that work? Or is there kind of an industry standard for that?
We don't have to go out for bid for services.
Right.
So that's why we did the interviews with all of the different firms and chose who we felt would be the best one for those projects. So we will have to go out for bid for the construction of the, but not for the architect.
And so the benefit is just that we have an ongoing relationship with an architecture firm?
Yes, sir. Anybody else? Let's vote, please.
Wooten.
Yes.
Yonda.
Yes.
Gilliland.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes. Item 4, Consider approving change order number 1 for Jackie Cooper Gymnasium Exterior Rehabilitation Project in the amount of $13,008, as recommended by the City Engineer. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
I'm sorry, yeah. I thought I saw somebody else that was getting ready to ask a question. No, I'm curious. I mean, frankly, why this wasn't included in the original quote. I thought the drainage was the main issue, but it wasn't included in the original scope of the work that we were quoted.
The original scope of the work was to work on the brick and the mortar on the outside. And once we got the contractor, we got his gutter person involved. And that was one of the recommendations that we had, this work to do that.
Okay, so we weren't aware of the problem beforehand, the last time that we?
No.
Decided we needed work.
This is something, the scope of the work is actually to work on the exterior block of the building. This had more to do with the roof and what they discovered.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, let's vote, please.
Yonda.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Gilliland.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Item 5, Consider a motion to enter into an agreement with Placer Labs, Incorporated, to provide software for the city staff to access data regarding assistance with economic development in the amount of $24,250, as recommended by the City Manager. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yep, can we get a little bit of discussion on what this is going to do for us? And how it's going to benefit?
Sure, you have a copy of the property overview as well as the presentation that we received from Placer. As you can see on the, on the presentation, this helps with retail recruitment. It helps with sales tax estimation, workforce attraction, event analysis, transportation, infrastructure, parks, and open spaces. It happens, what happens, we can use it for travel and tourism and for marketing and reports. One of, one of our neighbors, the City of Mustang, has this program and graciously, they sent us a copy of, they did a, a marketing report on Christmas in the Park. This is on the property overview that you can see. It told how many visits there were to the park, how long they stayed, how many times they came to visit, and this is all done by phone data. They, this report told us where they went after they left the park, what restaurant they went to. It told us where the visitors came from that came and visited the park and then where they went afterwards. We feel that this will be a great tool for us for economic development as well as all of our events, to really see what, where the people are coming from. I know one of the tools that Mustang is using it for is to see what restaurants Yukon has that their people are coming to. So if it's a Mustang resident and they are coming to a restaurant in Yukon, it's a way for them to generate this information to talk to that retail store or say, for instance, Chick-fil-A about how many people, how many of their residents are coming to a different city to eat there or shop there or?
And I didn't want to jump the gun while ago when you were asking for that data. This would provide that data, like what you were wanting her to come up with.
Yeah, that's really nice.
Yeah, I love it.
I had a couple of questions. Is the data, I mean, it's real time or is there any delay?
There's, there's about a two-day, two-to-three-day delay.
Yeah, that's still really great. So for the price, would that include anybody like coming in and training staff? Or is it, it's pretty user-friendly? It wouldn't require training?
From the way it looked to us when they did the presentation to us over Zoom, it looked like it was pretty friendly, but I believe that does include them to train us.
Or at least customer service of some sort, yeah. Is there, so the contract, I think it said for the first year.
That's right.
Is there any way to do like a multiple year or kind of lock-in? Like some of our other contracts have like a certain percentage.
They only do a one-year and it, that's because it may go up a little bit the next year.
I think my last question is, is there any restrictions geographically? Like you could pull data from anywhere in the United States?
There is. Yeah, no, yeah, there's not any discrimination or anything that we couldn't go and look someplace on Phoenix, Arizona and see, you know?
I've spoken to Mustang about this and it has been a great tool.
Yeah, it sounds like it.
For them to pull in people. Any other questions?
So we're going to be tracking, this sounds bad, but we're going to be tracking our citizens via their phone to see where they're going, to get data.
We will not know who specifically. Is that right?
Like, I'm not going to go Jeff went to. No.
Okay, because that's what it?
No.
Vice Mayor, it does not track the individual. All we get is receive the data that somebody from Yukon went to, say, Lowe's and then they went back home or they went to Target. It doesn't say or show us who that person is.
Okay.
We was concerned about privacy too. But the data we get does not show that, who the person is.
Doesn't show the person, but it, we're still.
Shows the town.
Shows the town and who went, not, not who, but some people went.
Somewhere.
Okay.
Does Oklahoma City use this?
I have no idea if they use this. This is something pretty new in this area.
Reno uses it, City of Mustang uses it.
There's a couple of other cities in the state of Oklahoma.
Yeah, I can't remember who else.
There were some others looking at it too as well.
What kind of benefit, dollar-wise, does Mustang see compared to what they spend on this? Do you have any idea?
I have not spoke to Mustang.
It's an economic development tool, so what they're doing is searching for businesses. It's like, if you look at the study here, there's a page 7. It tells where they come from before they went to the park and where they went to next. And that is the larger number of people. So for example, you know, 50%, 50.2% came from home to the event. And then it shows like Buffalo Wild Wings, 0.9% went to Buffalo Wild Wings. You know, there's a business outside of our city limits, but then 0.9% also went to Brahm's Ice Cream Store. So our thought is, is we maybe use this for a marketing tool for events because we know, like, for example, Chick-fil-A, 1.1% went there before they came to the park. So a marketing tool for those businesses or maybe routing traffic to a certain area too may help get dollars in the city limits on this event.
Would it also though track like where our people go to Oklahoma City?
To a certain type of business.
Right, so we could say to that business, look, we've got people driving there. Bring it to Yukon.
Yes.
Okay.
So basically, what they're doing is looking at certain businesses and then it also will tell you other businesses that complements, like say Chick-fil-A, what complements been around it. So it gives us a marketing tool to go look for those type businesses that may be expanding.
Interesting.
It's a pretty robust system, you know?
I love data. Any other questions?
This, you know, there is several pages, 10, on page 10, it talks about favorite places that everybody came from or to. So I mean, it tells a lot. And in one key deal, if you look on the very back page, out of 923 places that are natural or landmarks, we're 85 out of that.
Wow.
So during that timeline, we're number 85 out of those other places that people go visit. And it gives you an estimate of the top number of people that went to the event.
So this is telling us that Christmas in the Park, 98,000 people attended it?
It talks about visits.
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 Right.
Yes.
So 98,000 people went through it maybe multiple times?
Yes.
Right. Wow.
And then if you look back on page 12, it even actually gives you a map of where the people were coming from on our roads. So most of our individuals are coming from the east to Yukon. So.
So that will affect our, our marketing. You know, it can be used for several different tools. It's going to be great for our events to find out where the people are coming from and where they're going. We're wanting to do a handout at Christmas in the Park and maybe get some advertisements from some of the local restaurants and everything and see if they will advertise in the handout. And I think this right here will prove to them that. Yeah. Interesting.
But we don't know what type of return. There's really no way to determine the type of return we'd get on it?
We won't know probably after the first year and a half. But my understanding from Mustang, it's a great tool and they're very happy with what they've got coming to Mustang from what they've used it for already.
Okay, let's vote, please. Thank you.
Selby.
Yes.
Yonda.
Yes.
Wooten.
No.
Gilliland.
Yes.
Okay, item 6, Consider approving a budget amendment to transfer appropriations within the fiscal year 23 Capital Improvement Fund Budget by a total of $60,000 from park maintenance to streets. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Gilliland.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Yonda.
Yes.
Item 7, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Signing of a City of Yukon Settlement Documents for Case 322-CV-07721-WHO, City of Yukon versus Jewel Labs, Incorporated, XL, which was filed in San Francisco Federal Court as part of the multi-district litigation, Jewel Products by Liability Litigation, MDL 2913, to participate in the Jewel settlement. The settlement documents consist of the settlement acknowledgement letter, a government entity release of all claims, and disclosure of accounting. This is the discussions. We don't need a motion, do we?
You need a motion.
Motion?
This is a possible action, so yes.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Do you want to explain that to us?
Sure. Hi, my name's Matt Sill. I'm actually your lawyer in the opioid epidemic litigation. And in studying that case, we found this e-cigarette settlement. It's a $555 million settlement with cities and counties and school districts primarily. And the Yukon School District was participating in this litigation and so their lawyers came to us and we noticed that their trial had been continued and we thought there, there could be an opportunity for cities to participate. We were right. It's not, it's not a huge sum of money as your budget goes. But we were involved in the case for a few weeks and it's very similar to what we're doing in the opioid litigation. And so we thought it was just a, you know, it was something that y'all could use to, to fight vaping and e-cigarettes. And it's not something that hasn't been, hasn't been a huge ordeal for us. But there will be some more defendants that we're still going to pursue if y'all want us to pursue. That's something that we should probably talk about more in executive session. But this one, they, they've made an exception for Yukon to participate. The deadline has already passed, but like I said, we snuck in there. And so I highly recommend participating in this one and then we can talk in the future if you'll want to continue suing other e-cigarette manufacturers. But Jewel has gone into bankruptcy once. This one, I, I think, well, I'll talk about the other defendants another time. I don't want to talk too much about litigation strategy.
What was our portion? Was it 18,000?
It's about 8,000.
8,000.
Yeah, that's, that's four payments. And the first payment will be towards the end of this year. That will be about half of that and then the rest of them will be smaller payments. But yeah, it's about 8,300 gross.
Matt, that's a gross figure, is it not, that, will their things be deducted from that?
Yeah, I, I, my, my expectation, there will be about 2,000 that comes out of it for, for filing fees and attorney fees and consultants and things, so.
That money has to be used specifically in fighting?
You know, I don't have great information on, it, it doesn't have the same kind of limitations that we have in, in the opioid litigation where there's a specific list. And then again, the Yukon Public Schools is receiving a settlement also. And so, I mean, my, my suggestion would be to do something in coordination with them. But that's actually, to give you a full list of ways you can spend the money, I'll have to, I need to do a little more homework on that. But I don't think you have the same kind of limitations because it isn't, like I said, it's not a, it's not going to move the needle on substance abuse or anything.
Anybody else? All right, so possible action. We would move to accept this and sign?
Yeah.
So I make a motion that we accept this settlement and release all claims so that we can participate in this lawsuit. Do I have a second?
Second.
Now, that was to discuss it. We had to make a motion to accept it, right?
Your agenda item says discussion and possible action, so.
Just one motion.
Yeah, just one motion.
Okay, all right. Any more discussion? Any questions? Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks for having us.
Yes.
Was there a vote?
No, we're getting rid of it.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Because we'll make sure nobody else wanted to ask a question. All right, let's vote, please.
Selby.
Yes.
Yonda.
Yes.
Gilliland.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Item 8, Consider approving team design to provide professional engineering services for the preparation of plans and specifications for upgraded traffic signals at the intersection of State Highway 66 and Yukon Parkway at a cost not to exceed $10,760, as recommended by the Public Works Director. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we have an estimate on how much we would expect bids to come back at for the project that we're looking at?
We looked at the cost of the intersections that we did in, on Garth Brooks a couple of years ago. So we estimated about 80,000 total. So we're estimating the bids to come back for the project, 55,000 to 60,000, in that range. Because it's a little bit bigger intersection, it's going to be a little bit different than these intersections. So we anticipate 55,000 to 60,000.
I'm really holding out hope that at some point we can add a right turn lane off of 66 on the Yukon Parkway.
We are working with ODOT.
If we went ahead with the light project and then get some sort of turning lane there, would we have to redo?
I believe that could be added, no issues.
I'll talk to Michael with TC about that. We had a right turn.
Okay.
I believe it would just be added ahead.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to have to redo.
No, I don't, I don't.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Let's vote, please.
Gilliland.
Yes.
Yonda.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes. Any new business?
None tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Time for council discussion. We'll start with Councilman Gilliland.
Want to thank City Manager Tammy and for working with ODOT. Obviously, we're going to have to come up with ways to fund some of these projects. So thank you for that hard work and Shelley and others that worked with ACOG to secure some funding. That's great. Thank you, guys.
Anything else? Councilman Wooten?
I'm going to yield my time to Eric, if he wants anything else.
I'll yield back to Mr. Wooten.
Anything?
No, ma'am.
Councilwoman Yonda.
Well, we had our groundbreaking tonight at the Freedom Trail Park and I just want to thank the Park Board, Claudia Kurska. I know she did a lot of work on it, as well as other city employees. You know, this is a huge asset to our city and I can't, looking forward to being, to its completion. Thank you.
All right, some dates. Taste of Yukon is coming up Thursday, March 23rd, 5:30 to 7:30 at the Dell Robertson Center. You can purchase a ticket online or any of the recreation centers. You can purchase a ticket online or at any of the recreation centers. Senior Games, April fourteenth through the twenty-second. These are athletes fifty years and up. That's considered senior. From all over Oklahoma and beyond will compete in things like bowling, golf, track, field, horseshoes, creative arts, and more. You can sign at yukonok.gov slash catalog. Um, yes, I'm so excited about Freedom Trail and us breaking ground there. I also was privileged today to attend a congressional hearing, um, a U.S. Congressional hearing on the Ways and Means Committee where six different individuals came and gave their thoughts on our economy and on our labor force. Um, Senator Lucas was, or House Representative Lucas, he was, brought this to the heartland and it was held out at funk. They decided to come to Yukon of all places and what an honor for us to be able to host that event. Um, make the most of your tomorrow. Be kind to one another. This meeting is adjourned.